We'll open the Blackstone Millville Regional School District School Committee for Thursday, October 6th. You can stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Introduction of members.
Georgia Jarrett, Blackstone.
Joanne Watson, Blackstone.
Steve Tringali, Millville.
Tara Locken, Millville.
What do you need to sign? Blackstone.
Brittany Dwyer, Student Representative.
Erin Bonacco.
Alan Himmelberger, Superintendent.
Dave Thompson, Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you very much. We'll go to our only student rep that's with us tonight, Brittany.
Jack couldn't be here tonight, but we managed to get a few things down. So, sports-wise, the teams have both suffered some losses but have some good wins. So far, I have volleyball, JV, and varsity both won their game at Oxford on Monday, and I believe they have a home game tomorrow, but I'm not sure on that one. Football lost their most recent game, but they did win one, I think, last week or so, so that was good. Soccer, the boys won this week, the girls won on Monday, and field hockey, they lost on Tuesday, but still pretty early in the season, so they keep going. In future events, we have homecoming. We announced our theme for homecoming. Since we have much more time to plan things, we decided to make a theme for it. The theme is "No Place Like Homecoming," which is the Wizard of Oz theme. Leading up to it, we have a spirit week, so it goes with the theme. For example, Monday is "Oz the Great and Powerful," so we wear green. Or my favorite one is Wednesday, "Which Witch Is Witch?" So, we do Twin Day, stuff like that, so it works very well. And at the end of the week, we have the homecoming dance, which is themed as the Wizard of Oz, and then you have the bonfire on Saturday. And that is the 21st and the 22nd for the bonfire and dance. October 19th, sophomores and juniors take the PSATs. The sophomores will be taking them in their class because it is a requirement for them. The juniors, it is not a requirement, so they paid, but most of them do tend to take the test, so they will be taking it in the cafeteria. Freshmen that day will have some workshops to go to. They have an anti-bullying. They'll be introduced to the Naviance website. They might have, like, a motivational speaker and stuff like that, just kind of fun stuff to break free from the regular academic classrooms. The seniors are allowed a excused absence for something important, such as you could even take a day to fill out your Common App, work on your college essay, stuff like that, take a college visit that does not include the three days we have for college visits in the semester. We can do a job shadowing, which personally, I'm very excited about. We can job shadow someone that works in the field we intend on going to, job searching if we're not looking into going to college next year, stuff like that. That way, we have the opportunity to break free from the classroom and still do important productive things throughout the week. Also, this week came out progress reports. Haven't heard anything too negative about people's grades. It seems like everyone's doing really well, so that's basically all we have going on so far.
Okay. Any questions for Brittany?
Good job.
What job will you be shadowing?
I want to go into nursing, so I have a couple friends that's parents are nurses, so I'm going to ask them if I can shadow them for the day.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on, we have public forum, but actually, what we could do is, we have, under the report of the superintendent, the presentation of the Lions Club. And I know you're patiently waiting, so we could actually do that.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Catalano, welcome, and Hank, welcome. These gentlemen are with the Lions Club, and the Lions does terrific work in so many areas, and one that they now do is vision screening for students. And I believe you said that, that, excuse me, that so far, the Lions have now screened over half a million students across the country.
Wow.
Pretty impressive. And so, without further ado, gentlemen, the school committee and I are all ears.
Thank you. Thank you very much for having us here. My name's Tony Catalano, and I've been a Lion for about 20 years. Just to get a little bit of brief history on the Lions, this year's starts our centennial. We've been an organization of community service worldwide for 100 years. Out of that 100 years, 92 of them have been to strive to eradicate blindness, help people that have sight problems, and that was all brought upon in 1925 at a Lions convention in, I don't remember exactly where, I think it was Chicago. A young lady named Helen Keller came to the Knights as a speaker, and she came to the Lions, I'm sorry, as a speaker, and challenged them to be knights of the blind. And the Lions took that challenge, and to this day, their main goal is to eradicate blindness and to prevent sightlessness wherever they can, and to help those with sight problems. And that includes everything. We collect eyeglasses, we do vision tests, we have a giant 40-foot i-Mobile that can be brought in. But today, we're not here to talk about that. We're here to talk about the kids. The kids are one of our main focuses. And through the 1.4 million members that the Lions have throughout the world, kids are always our prime concern. So, I'm going to introduce Hank. He's been a past district governor, very good friend. He knows a lot about this program. As Mr. Himmelberger might have told you, he kind of talked with the nurses, and they were very supportive, so we hope that you folks are too. We think it's an outstanding program for the kids. So, without further ado, Hank.
Well, thank you for letting us come tonight. Two years ago, our parent organization started a program to preserve the eyesight of kids across the United States. We started in three states to see how the program would work, and it was hugely successful. In those short time, as you've heard, we've done over half a million kids. And we just introduced the program into our district last February, so we're really just taking it off. We're screening, we're not testing, we're screening. We're screening against a set of established norms that say, you might or might not have a problem. We do it now in the Hudson School System, the Neshoba Regional School System. We've done about 900 kids in both systems, and now we're trying to spread it through a lot of other systems in our district. It's free, totally free, and it's done with a camera. This is the camera. The closest we get to kids is three feet. I'm going to try to get it to run, just so you can see. It just gets their attention. That's what it looks like, and it draws the attention of the child. And once you go through the initial three or four or five and get rolling, it doesn't take 30 seconds to do it. It takes longer to print a report, if you want a report. And we do anything that you want. You know, we can just do the screening, and you folks print your own reports. We can print reports for you, and I'll pass a couple around.
I'll get it.
Okay, one of each. All of our programs are covered by a Lions International Liability Insurance Program of $2 million. You do have to have one of your staff available when the screening is done. If you wanted your own folks to run the equipment, it's not a big deal. I can train you in 10 minutes. Or the Lions will come in and do it for you, the Midway Lions. So, if you decide that this is a program that you'd like to do with, we'll go whatever way makes it easy for you folks, in whatever manner you want. Totally free, we can do from six months up to 100 years old. It's all confidential. You don't even need to put in any information unless you want that printed on the report so you can pass it out. It's whatever you want to do. The only thing we do need is the age, because there's different criteria that you screen against. Other than that, it's totally private. Now, what you're looking at there is a person who's got some severe eye problems. We can test for nearsighted, fociated, whether the eyes are focused, whether the pupils are misaligned, whether the pupils have different sizes. They're all conditions that, for children, if you don't pick them up early and correct them, impact their learning. I mean, at that young age, it's mainly all visual. We can screen pretty close to 100 percent. There's a few that we just can't do because the pupil and the eyes are too small. And if we were to run across that, and the child can't be done with a camera, usually the local Lions Club will take care of it and do it with an ophthalmologist or optometrist or whatever. But I don't represent the Midway Lions Club. I represent the folks that kind of get this equipment and put it together. We're a separate corporation. We're a 501(c)(3) corporation that manages all this equipment on behalf of the Lions Club. These guys own it. He's my boss, one of 6 million. So, let me open it up. Any questions you got, gosh, I'll do my damnedest answer them.
Any questions?
When, if there is some kind of a problem, what's the next step? If you pick up a problem?
Well, you get this report.
Yeah.
Okay, now, two or three things could be done. You give it to the parents, and you say, okay, your child needs to be followed up by a professional. All they've done is, it's been screened, and something seems to be abnormal. If it was a child that needed financial help, I've yet to see a child not being helped by a local club. I mean, we always step up. If a child can't afford glasses, we'll get the glasses. It just depends. I don't have a straight answer. Some parents don't want us to touch anything, some parents take the help. We're then helped.
Yeah.
There's no chance.
So, I assume it would be something we would be sending home for parents' permission to participate?
Yes, and the initial thought would be to screen kindergarten through grade six in our three elementary schools. Parents would certainly have the option to not take advantage of it. They could opt out, and that's fine, too. But it is free.
We have a consent form, which we'll be glad to give you to use, or you can use your own. It's whatever is easiest for you folks.
I think we had something in the dental line a few years ago that came in, and we would just have to make sure the parents were...
Yeah.
Yeah, if you approve it and you want to use our form, you know, it says right on the bottom, it's the parents that give the permission to do it. I mean, I've done kids in daycare centers and what have you. It's fabulous.
It's all, it's all a preventive medicine. Basically, that's what it is. We, as the Lions Club, we've already helped many, many children in all the years that we've been in, Blackstone has been operating for 58, 58 years now, and we have helped so many children. We have never turned down a child that has been in need of glasses or an eye exam. Just recently, we've had two or three different occasions where we've sent children to an optometrist, rather, an ophthalmologist, to have an eye exam, and all we do is tell them to send the Lions the bill. And that's what happens. Parents don't have to give us any information. We don't ask them to fill out any type of financial form. That's just the Lions Club does it, and that's basically what we do. So, I could very honestly say and guarantee that should a child be tested and something is there, and if the parents wanted to speak to us in private, or even the parent wanted to talk to somebody else, we'd be more than happy to do what we can to help them. We have, we have no affiliation with any specific ophthalmologist, optic center, anything like that. So, if the parent has their own, that's great. If they don't, and they need somebody, we don't suggest any one individual doctor. What we do is say, pick out one, find one, and let us know what you need, and that's where we take it.
Or if the parents would rather go through the school and not even go to the Lions Club.
That's right.
You could do that.
Well, just, we do already have a program in place in our schools in Blackstone whereby, if the nurse deems there is a problem, and this is without any type of eye screening by us, just a simple eye screening, or even if the teacher thinks the student is having a vision problem, they'll notify the nurse, and due to HIPAA laws, we don't get any names or anything. Okay? The nurse will contact us, our president, and from there, the club just follows through, and whatever the parent may need, we'll help out with.
Brittany?
I just had a question, because I'm in Franklin, and I know I had a student that reached out to the Lions Club, and you supplied them with glasses.
Yeah.
And I'm just wondering if our nurse has a contact for the Lions in a particular case?
Yeah.
Where a student may go to the nurse, they have their eye exam, and, you know, it's, the cost is too much for the parent. You know, do we reach, do we give the parents a contact for the Lions Club?
No.
Do our nurses have the contact?
As I was saying, there is already a procedure in place due to HIPAA laws. We do not need names. All we need to know is what the child needs, and we go from there. And then, all we do is tell the nurse, tell the parent to go to the, if it's an eye exam, go to the eye exam, get us the bill. If it's glasses, you know, we do have, at one time, we had a program with lens crafters, where if we sent somebody that was referred by the Lions, they would have a special program that they would operate. I don't know if that's still in place, okay? But I do, I have heard that Walmart Eye Glass Center does it, and I'm sure that Target would do it, Sears. I'm sure if they, if we stepped, if they stepped up and said the Lions are going to pay, I don't think anybody's going to, going to say no, that, you know, we don't trust you.
Will this be for, so you're saying elementary, Blackstone and Millville Elementary?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
We wouldn't eliminate any child that's covered by the region. Not one child.
We don't currently screen all the elementary schools?
Certain grades.
We do. We do in certain grade levels. The nurses do provide vision screening, but this program is a little bit more...
In-depth.
In-depth is the word, because they, as Tony and Hank said, will confidentially just take the bill and provide the service.
And it's all grade levels, not just, because I think it's only one grade level, right?
It's a couple.
Yeah.
Yeah. The other thing, too, is we could roll it out across the district, as they say, they do.
Oh, yeah.
But the initial thought was to screen the kindergarten through sixth grade in the three schools to provide this first level of screening.
You don't need a motion?
No, it was really just a recommendation from the, to the committee and to hear the gentleman speak.
On the report that the student would take home, is that information kind of printed out?
It would be, if you wanted to use that right there.
Just some kind of assistance, like, if, you know, the assistance's needed part, like, if, you know, they can't afford care, is there anything about contacting the Lions or?
Again, like I said, we don't get direct contact from the parent. There is a program, again, in place, and, again, I can't say this enough, HIPAA laws put a lot of handcuffs on us. Not that they want to be nasty, it's just that they want to protect the people, and we abide by that. And like I said, we have a very good direct contact with the nurse right here in the middle school, come to think of it, and the high school, and this would be something that we would start, but I don't think there would be any difference. We wouldn't have to know anything different about the child. If the nurse said, I have somebody, we would say, fine, tell them, go ahead, go for the eye exam, or go and get glasses, and we would recommend wherever our program works so that they can save as much money as possible, and also, too, we would help them pick up whatever cost that is necessary.
I think that's what Tara was asking, too. So, do you have a recommended list of people that, in the area that you use generally, or no?
No, no, we don't.
I remember...
Like I said, we kind of stay away.
Walmart.
And we kind of stay away from specifically saying a doctor or a location. We will recommend, because, as I said, at one time, we did have lens crafters.
Right.
And I don't know if that program is still in place. But some people know of an eye doctor, and they say, oh, my dad went to this one, I'd like to go to that one. So, we'll say, fine, go to that doctor, you know? Send us the bill, we'll take care of it if you can handle it. And, you know, it's very honestly a part of what Lions do. It is what we do. I can't say that enough either. Sightlessness and blindness and eye care, you know, Helen Keller lived in Rentham, Mass for many years, and she's like local, and you mentioned the name, but, I mean, she's synonymous with blindness and treatments and all that, and we are just so happy to be able to do something.
Thank you very much.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great program.
We will be in touch and move forward with it.
Yes, definitely.
Nice meeting you, Zol.
Thanks for everything you do.
Time, much appreciated.
Do you need these back?
Thank you, guys.
Do you need this?
No, I don't. There's no name in this.
Yeah. We can put them in our reading folder. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. And moving on, we have Consent Agenda A, which is Warrants, Payroll, and Payables, and minutes for September 22nd. I would need a motion. Wendy is abstaining. So, do you want to break them, or?
Make a motion to approve Consent Agenda A.
Okay, motion made by Tara. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Steve. Any discussion? And Wendy is abstaining. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous, minus Wendy. Thank you. And then, we have School Committee Superintendent Goals that we were working on last meeting. Did everyone receive the updated copy from the subcommittee? I think we just need a motion to approve these, or if there are, is there any discussion? We can discuss after the motion, or?
I'll make a motion to approve the Superintendent Goals for 2016 to 2017, school year.
As printed?
Yep.
Okay. Motion made by Wendy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Georgia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
He's got, I'm not a poll. He's got this guy. I just had a comment. I just wanted to thank the committee for the process, and I also really wanted to thank Jane and Wendy for putting a lot of time and energy and expertise into this, and I really appreciate their, their help. So, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Onward.
So, motion made by Wendy and second by Georgia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Unanimous. And moving on to the completion of the report.
Thank you very much. As you can see here, thank you very much, Mrs. Cobb has just joined us. I'll give you a minute to catch your breath, and, but just to move down, the approval of the middle school special education teacher, this is a position that we have suddenly needed at the middle school, and we needed to have this recommendation voted in open session. This is for a teacher that will be able to keep two students for sure, and maybe a third in the district, and possibly bring back one or two others in the future. It is, it's the missing piece of the programs that we have in the elementary school and at the high school, and I believe that the, it's the right thing for our students, and certainly, it's the right thing for the district. So, I would, I would urge the approval of this position.
I make a motion to approve the middle school special education teacher.
Motion made by Wendy. Is there a second?
Go ahead.
Joanne.
Second by Joanne. Any discussion?
It's okay. I'm amazed we've gotten this far without one, truly. I mean, this is a program that's growing everywhere in the state, so this is absolutely money well spent. It helps the kids, it helps the classroom, and you're right, if it brings back, you know, a few kids from my district placement, it's absolutely money well spent. But, you know, social-emotional is the big thing now. It's been neglected for a lot, a lot of, a lot of years. Whenever there's budget cuts, this is, it's sort of a soft curriculum, so it's an easy target for those that don't understand it, but it's something we absolutely need, so I'm glad to see it's here.
Any other discussion?
And I think, I think we look forward to an update on how that's going once it gets rolled.
Absolutely.
I'd like to have Ms. Braverman in to give us, I feel we have a lack of information on this position being needed so quickly, or, you know, why it wasn't put in our budget last year. So, I would definitely like to see the, the needs and the rollout of that room, because it needs to be more than a room. And what Steve just said about the importance of it, it, I mean, if we're doing it the right way, it could, it can be amazing. I feel like it might be so rushed right now. I don't, I don't know how the kids will be benefiting from it in that manner, but...
I guess, um...
I feel like we have, we need more information.
Yeah, right. And I have asked Mrs. Braverman to be in on the next meeting, and she will be here to present bulleted updates to the committee. This room, last year, we had students that were in grade eight and that we were able to move pretty smoothly and seamlessly up to the high school. This year, we have sixth and seventh graders and perhaps a fifth grader or so also that can benefit. So, it happened quickly because of move-ins and the needs escalating. But, Mrs. Braverman, will be here on the 20th to provide the detail, the updates and the background for this, as well as the entire program.
How quickly do you expect to hire that teacher?
Very quickly.
Any other discussion or questions?
I think you'll find pretty quickly that you probably will need support from a para to implement a lot of the plans, you know? People don't know what they'll do in a lot of situations like this. These people will bring in, and they'll, they'll come in, they'll develop behavior support plans for individual students, and you just need another pair of hands to implement them. They need to travel between buildings and support teachers and support kids. So, I mean, I'm glad it's in, and I think this is something we've had in the budget in the past that seems to be getting cut, and it's in for a year, it's out for a year. But I think, once you have it in place and you fully staff it and get it running, this will be, this will be a utility. We're not going to cut this again.
In talking to Mr. Cameron, I believe he said that it had been in probably from his first year.
Yeah.
And then, based upon grade levels and how we were able to, to work it, but now is, it's the right time.
The building I'm in, we have a position like this. We have a staff of five. We have 550 students, we have a staff of five to support this program. So, I think you'll see pretty quick, you're going to need a para, but I would absolutely support that as well, so that's not a stumbling block.
We have, at your grade level.
Yeah.
So, we have a social-emotional. How many, how many staff members are supporting at the complex?
Um, I believe a total of three.
Which kind of works out.
Yeah.
And I think, I know I shared this with Alan, but if there is a need for a para, I would like to hear from Ms. Braverman on where we may have a para already available, because, I mean, there is a need. The other thing is, a long time ago, there used to be a social-emotional room at the elementary, but there was never an opportunity for those kids to move forward to another, to another spot. So, we always were left outplacing those students. So, I think it's moving that, moving that, that academic classroom forward and having someplace for them to go is huge in building that, building that classroom. Just to share with the people at home, what does it roughly cost to outplace these students that we're hoping to get back into the district?
Right. A minimum with tuition and transportation, probably $60,000 per student.
So, that, there's a reason for keeping these students in our district?
Yes.
Not only to be with their population of students, but also, when you, when you have to put that much money per student to outplace, it's just important to have them in our community.
Right. Couldn't agree more.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And I'm abstaining, I abstained on our previous vote, so...
So, you're going to put this out, too? You're going to post this position?
Already posted.
Yeah, I thought so.
Yeah. Thank you very much, on behalf of our students. Mrs. Cobb?
Yes.
Would you like to give the first quarter financial report?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's start with the revenue...
Let's start with the revenue report, which is the single page report. So this year, by the end of September, September, we've received the two payments from the towns and three payments from the states. So we're, we're doing well with cash flow. And it's pretty straightforward, all the revenue sources. In terms of other revenue sources, I want, I just want to print out that the rental of classroom compared to last year, we've increased 30,000 revenue because of the rental of classroom in Millville and more, two more classrooms in high school, two by call.
So the total is increased for 30,000 for the whole year or at this point?
For the whole year.
Okay.
From 30 to 60.
Mr. Himmberger, do you have anything to say with revenue? Any questions?
Can you point out, where's the, I, I see rental classrooms. I see 60,000 budgeted, received 15, anticipated 45. Where's the 30,000? I'm missing the math.
That was last year.
Compared to last year, last year we only have 30.
Okay, I gotcha.
We've increased the revenue by, by the ability to lease more space.
Gotcha.
Let's move to expenditure report.
Actually, I'm sorry, I have one more.
Oh, good, sure.
This is, this is, all right, I'm sorry, never mind. I was confused, I'm good now.
Years, year 17, our total budget is 22,017,480. And after the first quarter, our encumbered balance is 836,000. It is a little low. That, that's a number we, we would see at the end of the second quarter. So because of tight budget this year. So we'll be very cautious about spending this year.
Where do you see the biggest differences? Are there any line items you could point out that are? I know you're saying tight budget, but any areas of concern on here because of that number? Or where, where do you see the biggest difference that's bringing that number down?
Insurance, we have 160,000 increase from last year.
And we did not budget? I thought we changed our budget.
Just because we, we have, we have very tight budget this year, we start with very small number. And so in general, we have a low balance as of right now. And Mr. Himmberger, Ms. Thompson, I meet periodically about budget and I watch the budget every week. Watch the balance every week, of course. So we just have to be very careful of spending.
Now, the 1450, the management and technology line, is that where our Chromebooks came from?
Right.
First page.
Did they come from 4401 or did they come from 1450, the Chromebooks?
Are they already paid for, is my que, is that already here?
Yes, they're part of, they're part of the encumbered funds.
That's from 2451 classroom.
2451.
Yeah, you're right.
Technology.
Next, I went up.
Okay.
Okay.
Any question about expenditure?
Do we see the instructional assistance line being a problem?
Well, hopefully.
Or should I say, or explain instructional assistant and?
That's the paraprofessional line. And we took that line down.
I thought we made adjustments there.
Well, we have, but that's, that's where we are now.
And last year we had kindergarten grant, this year we don't have it.
That would have been on the revenue page?
But that.
That's.
It was moved.
Yeah, that was, that offset.
Yeah.
I think just to speak to the para, the para line, we are down two pares this year from last year, is that accurate?
That is correct, in total.
I understand what you're saying about 836 is not really too flush, not a whole lot of workroom. Just for like historical and idea, like what it's been at this point in the past several years. Were we over a million in the past or, you know?
Considering the incoming snow and any possible that student move in.
Yeah. I understand, yeah, if we have a significant, you know, special expenditure coming up, unexpected, that's where it comes from. A big snowstorm, that's where it comes from. Especially cold winter, that's where it comes from.
I remember in my first year, before, so I was 14, 15.
Yeah.
We had about this level of unencumbered balance in January.
Okay.
So, so it, so when said second quarter is, is where you're more comfortable being at this level. So we're, we're gonna have to be careful.
Than the past year.
Yeah.
And just keeping that number of, if, we don't want to outplace anybody at the tune of 60,000 when we only have 836. That could be one student.
Yeah.
We just can't.
Three, four, five come in, you're in trouble.
We have to pick up that, we have to pick up that. When they come in within the school year, we have to pick up that expenditure.
Until April 1st.
Till April 1st.
Yep.
Does anyone have any other questions about the expenditure report?
I just wanna, I just, I just worry that it is so low. And I know that we're watching it, but I still think we want to keep our, our school committee goals in the beginning and what we thought we wanted to make adjustments to. We need to make sure that we're still sticking to the technology and the things that we did talk about as best we can. And if we are cutting corners, that we make sure that the school committee top priorities are met first. And the, where we're cutting is, is more of a discussion first. Especially keeping those top priority goals from last year in the forefront, like Chromebooks and things like that.
And those are so far in the budget. And with, with the emphasis on that, I know that Wen speaks softly, but she has the leadership team's attention in terms of making sure that requisitions and purchase orders are cleared with her first. And there, we've told everyone that there may be things, stuff that we must postpone. Certainly that January to April 1st is a critical time in the school budget.
Well, I'm wondering if there's a number, the, us as a committee, being that we're not into the winter yet, would feel like we'd need to put any kind of freeze on our budget.
Yeah, if it doesn't, you know.
If we're being told we're about a quarter ahead of ourselves and we haven't hit the cold weather and the snow yet, what number is responsible that we want to put, put something in place to protect the budget?
Any thoughts on that one?
We've already told all the principals and department heads that we, we pretty much freeze the budget already.
I just want to make one thing.
So does that need to come from us?
I, I think it, I think it definitely should come from us. No?
Well, I, I think that, you know, freeze is a, is a word, but it's a word that sometimes gets misinterpreted because so much of the school budget is fixed costs that, that must be spent. And the discretionary costs in a budget are relatively small, you know, four, five, six percent. And that's where the monitoring that Wen does with, with principals and department heads and with all those admins who submit recs and POs. There's not a whole lot that we've, we can not pay, but we certainly have told and Wen has told everyone, there's going to be a, a very good chance that we're not going to be able to support the discretionary request between now and, and second quarter. So the goal is to, to maintain that, that cushion as, as far as we can. It's, it's, it's going to be a battle this year.
I mean, we've seen a freeze for a few years, even from the time I've been here, so. Right, but if they come back to us in January and this is half, if this is 400,000, we're going to say we should have done it. So, because that wouldn't even have been the snow and ice, so I, I. What did we end the year with last year? Just, I, I know the number in the back of my head, but.
We ended the year, just add the budget.
Right, but what was the number that we were, that we put into?
E and D.
E and D.
Yeah, I was asking about that one.
We don't have any money from the expenditure budget into E and D, but we closed some of the Medicaid reimbursement to E and D.
So when you have your undesignated fund balances at the end of the year, the, but the, the general fund budget.
But the goal is not to be zero by the end of the year.
Well, I mean.
And I know we weren't last.
No, 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 from the, from the operating budget.
Right.
It's okay if you're at zero. I think the, the, you know, if you do have funds left that you can, you can encumber forward, yes. But in this budget, which is very, very low, reduced, tight, we will probably spend it right to the penny.
And I think we, in, in the last three, since school has opened, every meeting, we've made a motion to spend money. So I just, I think.
I think we can just be cautious at, at our meetings that we, we look at what we have before we make those motions. And, and hopefully we will get the information needed to make those motions more informational.
Yeah, I, I think freeze is a little harsh, but I agree.
Well, it doesn't stop what we've already budgeted for.
Be careful, obviously.
It doesn't stop what we've already budgeted for.
Yeah.
So I, I think what I would like to see is, is this before the end of the second quarter? Like maybe our December meeting before snow?
End November?
December, the Thursday.
That's my next question, what, what's the next timeline event? We do it like monthly, every other month?
Well, I mean, typically we report it quarterly, but we can run the report and give it to the committee at the end of November.
That would be good, even if it's just in our packet and we're more able to monitor it.
Yep, and then you have a comparative.
Yeah, and if it is for discussion, we can, we can bring it up.
But I, I don't know, I think December, because the end of November is actually the week before Thanksgiving. It's only a few weeks away, so. December 8th, is it?
Six weeks away, six, seven weeks away.
November would be November 17th.
Whenever you want.
October? What's the meeting, October? In October, middle of October?
This is.
You mean November?
I mean November. I would have a first week of December.
Yeah, December 8th is our, an updated version of this? I'm sorry, December 1st is our meeting. I think we have the 1st and the 15th.
Yes.
So December 1st.
December 1st.
Okay.
Can I ask one more question on line 9400, payments to collaboratives? That really jumped, is that students we pay to go out? That was a really big increase.
Yeah, 49 to 164.
I think that 49, Wen, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that represents more offsets to that number. It's a, it's a huge number. But depending upon what you apply against that.
Oh, so that was like the end of the year last year with the final.
Or, or the large bed grants. But what comes out of the operating general fund budget is, is that?
Okay, thank you.
12-1, we'll run it.
Should I ask another question of Wen? Just the, I've, the new handicap van we bought is very bit visible. We leased it, correct? We ended up leasing the van instead of purchasing? Off the top of your head, how much did that save us on the transportation?
35,000 a year.
No, to the payment to Telstone.
It's 50,000 a year to Telstone. And the lease is, lease include all other expenditure, it's about 15,000 a year.
So we leased it for how many years? Five years? And that saved us one, one wheelchair van?
Yes.
So you said 350,000?
We can save 30,000 to 35,000 every year for five years.
Each year of the lease?
Right.
We will save between 30 and 35,000.
And that, that, that lease, when you talked about all the stuff that goes with the lease, are you talking about insurance, you're talking about everything that's included in that lease? Or are we, is that not including the insurance for the driver? Is that included in what you're?
No, I didn't include the insurance of the driver. The driver is, is already in, in district.
Right. I actually have a question to piggyback, we have two vans, correct?
We have, yes, we have a wheelchair van and a red van.
So we have the miniature van and the red van and the wheelchair van and the red van. And we, how many drivers do we have?
Just one.
So why are we, I guess my question is, why are we insuring two vans with one driver? If we only have one driver available?
Are we still using the red one?
Oh, yeah, yeah. He comes back with one van and takes the other one out.
Oh.
Oh, yeah. It isn't sitting there.
Is that Kevin?
Yeah, both are used every day.
But it's only one driver, is it worth having both of them on the road?
Yes, because you couldn't, because the wheelchair van cannot hold as many students.
It fits a lot, it does fit a lot.
Yeah, but not enough.
So my question is, would it benefit us to, I know we don't want to start a transportation company, but are, are we going out to bid soon, as you had spoken of for our transportation? We had talked about doing it October, November.
Yes.
So should we look at, I mean, is it benefiting us financially? I, I believe that in the Telstone contract, the, the vans are 350 dollars a day, those buses.
That can be a conversation for the 20th, because we do have that on the list for the 20th, to bring in the transportation and the conversation. Because it is.
Which kind of bus? Because the minibus is 315 dollars a day. And the regular bus is, some bus is 192.
So the wheelchair.
Van.
Bus.
Oh, the wheelchair.
Is, how many are we currently in contract with for Tel, with Telstone? For the wheelchair?
Wheelchair, no, we don't have any.
Yeah, we, well, theirs comes down my street. So that, the one we leased is, it looks like it's doing the older kids maybe, but.
We have minibus.
Minibus, but.
With a wheelchair. Special ed student.
It might have the lift on the side, but I don't think it has the setup on, they're not using it like that, I don't believe.
Okay. I'm not sure. On the 20th? If, I guess for the 20th, if we can have the count of how many minibuses versus wheelchair van, buses we're, we're in contract with, with Telstone versus the one we are leasing for ourselves. And to see if that would benefit us next year to have one.
Put more kids on our buses, on ours rather than Telstone's? That's what I'm thinking. It's worth looking at, yeah.
We'll do it for the 20th?
Yeah, we have transportation on that.
Okay.
Is there anything else for Wen?
Anyone else for, for Mrs. Cobb?
Nope.
Thank you very much, Wen, and she has made sure that everyone is aware of the, the situation we are in today so that the next couple of months are going to be critical for us to monitor. So I'm sure that we will, we will do that. And we will have that expenditure report for the 12-1 meeting for the committee. Real quick, the district and school accountability review is a targeted review that is prescribed by mass general law. It was put into effect in 2000 with the intent that all districts would be visited every six years. six years, and a rather forensic review of all district operations, leadership and governance, student services, administration, finance and asset management, curriculum and use of data, technology. All of this is part of this review, which is actually a fair amount of work to prepare for, and then a three-day visit, four-day visit in March. And then the team puts together their report, and then I review it, and then it is given to the public over the summer. As near as I can figure, we have never had one in the district. They were, the department was certainly very busy looking at Level 3, 4, and 5, and turnaround schools over the last several years, so I don't believe they've ever done one. The results can be challenging, but I think we will meet this. It's a bit of a cross between a NIASK visit and a CPR, a coordinated program review, but it looks at all aspects of district operations, and that will be March, I believe it's 12th through the 15th. The last on my report is the opioid substance abuse policy, which is really a part of the legislation the governor signed into law, and you have copies of that. This is very much standard language that many school committees have adopted, but this one is the alcohol, tobacco, and drug use that is prohibited, as well as the education around age-appropriate education and prevention programs for K-12. That curriculum I am asking the principals to provide to the committee, but this will be recommended to be our policy for the district, and then will be posted on the website as well.
Are we going to need readings of these?
You certainly can. You can also waive, it's whatever the committee's pleasure, you can certainly waive the readings and just approve it. You can have a reading and come back on the 20th.
But this is standard language that virtually the whole state is adopting.
Exactly, it's MASCs.
We're also going through our policy manual, but we're going to save that anyway, so...
Yep.
Slide right in there?
Yeah.
So do we make a motion now, waive the reading?
You can.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the reading and accept the policy for the opioid and substance abuse policy.
Okay, motion made by Wendy to waive and accept, as written by MASC. Is there a second?
Sure.
Steve, thank you. And any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any approves? Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I believe that concludes my report.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to the report of the assistant superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There is a memo in your packet, which highlights the things we're going to discuss. Tomorrow is our first professional development day of the season of the year, and as I had mentioned at our previous meeting, the main, the main event, if you will, is training in Stage 1 of Understanding by Design, which is going to be our curriculum design model. We have Claire Ringwald of Teachers 21 coming in. She'll be doing two sessions, one in the morning, starting at 8:00 till 10:30. That will be our elementary, although there'll be some shifting depending on what other people are doing, but that'll be mostly our elementary folks. And then, starting at 11:30, will be our secondary, the middle school and the high school folks. They're basically getting the same training on how to do the first part of Understanding by Design, and during the off times, we're asking people to continue their work on curriculum apps or come up with other various projects. If you look behind that, there is a printout of all the different workshops that are being offered during the day, just for your edification, I'm not going to go through every single one of them. But, so we're very excited about the quality of there, the number of people who are signed up, and the things that are going to be happening tomorrow. Chromebook initiative, just to give you an update, we are still preparing for the deployment of the Chromebooks for grades nine and 10 at the high school. Through our research, we've kind of discovered that we definitely need to spend a little time, maybe slow down a little bit. We need to update our acceptable use policy, because it does not really reflect mobile devices at this current time. Also, look at, we need to do a little more research on the insurance option for families, and as I mentioned to you before, basically, families need to sign off that they'll either replace the devices, because they do belong to the school system, they're a little less than $200 apiece, or they'll have the option of purchasing an insurance policy, which we estimate to be about $15 a month, but there are some other options that are coming available that might be a little less expensive, so we want to make sure we do our due diligence there. And there are also some fine tuning and tweaking we need to do with the access of the network, not the network itself, but basically how it's set up to make sure it's going to run very smoothly. So with all of that being said, we also want to make sure we put together parent meetings and student meetings, so we have all of that in order. So we're looking at, hopefully, a rollout or putting devices in people's hands the first week of December. That is my new target. Big Ideas Math, two weeks ago, we did have our Big Ideas Math training here at the middle school, although we are rolling out Big Ideas Math in 6th grade, the 7th and 8th grade teachers were there as well. Spent a full day with a trainer who I've had the pleasure of working with before, she's fantastic. People walked out of that meeting very excited, and at this point, everyone in 6th grade should have their Big Ideas books and are using them. So that would be it from my end, unless there's any specific questions?
Do we have the Chromebooks already?
We have 220 out of the 240 that we need.
And are they available to use within the school, while we're waiting to roll them out?
The problem is, is that we need to get the GoGuardian software and put the GoGuardian software on there. And I will, you know, just remind the committee that we did lose one lead tech person and have brought on another tech person who is excellent and is doing yeoman's work, but, you know, we basically, between the first person resigning and the, we basically a month there, and then two weeks to find out where water level is, so we're literally about a month behind where we should be, just on a good day. Then you add another couple weeks in there to fix all the things only one person was trying to do when we really need three or four, and you have kind of a perfect story. But basically, we could give students, you know, the Chromebooks at this point, but then we have to worry about getting them back.
I mean, like, send them home. I mean, like, if a teacher wants to use them or do something with the Chromebooks. I mean, I know we don't have a cart.
Right.
But if we have them sitting there for two months, I mean, we could, I mean, I would just, I mean, if we have them...
Right, but we got to, we need to make sure that the setup of the network is completed before we do that, and that's probably going to take three weeks.
Each Chromebook's going to actually end up being assigned to a student.
Right.
So they'd be using...
Right, and then you run the risk of how do you move the Chromebooks from one side, one end of the building to another, without them breaking and all that kind of stuff. So technically, we could. The Chromebooks, so they brought them home and signed on to it, without GoGuardian, if they sign on to a network that is not in the school, they do not have a filter on them.
So what do we have now with our Chromebooks now?
If they are in the building, they use the filter, but GoGuardian will allow us to keep track of them, should they get lost, will allow them to, will allow us to be able to push out and take out, take back apps, and will enable them, no matter where they're used, whether they're used at grandma's house, their own house, or the public library, they still would come back through our filters, which I think is a good practice, because if we're going to give people devices to surf the internet, we probably should be a little restrictive with where they can go with our devices, so...
So where do you see, what do you see for a timeframe for that?
I am hoping, I am hoping, and I'm pushing, I will say I'm pushing, for the first week of December. But that would give us time to meet with students, meet with parents, you know, there is a checkout process. I mean, honestly, in a perfect world, we would have been having these conversations with parents back in June, but seeing that we did not have a budget, it was not a conversation we were ready to have, so...
And how many carts are we short for? Do we have any carts for the...
We have the carts, we have, we have not purchased any carts.
But there are carts.
We do have.
We do have, there is a cart here at the middle school, there is a cart at the complex. I do not believe Millville has a cart at this point. There is one at the high, there is one at the high school as well.
Yep.
Right, it's been mainly stationed in the math department. But carts are not inexpensive, they're, you know, to get a quality cart, you're talking eight hundred or a thousand dollars.
It's like a Brink's truck.
Right.
Oh, I know, I know, when we looked at them before, they're, I think, we ended up paying about eight or nine hundred dollars.
Right, right, so they're not, they're not expensive, so it doesn't, and honestly, in our present, you know, if we were in a good budget position and we could buy a cart with the understanding that next year we would put Chromebooks in it at the elementary school, you know, I would look at that. But at this point, to have a teacher come up and try to pick up 20 Chromebooks...
Right, no, and for charging and everything else, too.
Put them on some sort of cafeteria cart or something and roll them down the hallway is kind of a recipe for disaster. And we still have got, we've got 20 more Chromebooks to order and to get into place before we have enough for the students to get, so that's where we are.
Any other questions for Dr. Thompson?
Just looking at all the things you have for tomorrow, looks like quite a roster.
Yeah, and, you know, and it's twofold. You know, we set up some definite district goals, the curriculum map being there, bringing in that training. Basically, if you teach a curriculum, you need to go through that training. The other half of the day, the fallback is to continue that work and apply that work in your curriculum maps. But, you know, knowing the people are professionals, that they have an independent project or some other project they want to work on, there is the ability to put in a proposal, have it approved by your evaluator, and then by me, so they have a good amount of choice. And I firmly believe that we have a very professional staff here, and they should be treated as professionals and given some options for their professional development.
Can you just talk about the CPI training? It's 13 hours for that, obviously, that's not all tomorrow.
Yeah, well, there's two versions. The CPI training is basically those folks who do, it's called restraint training, but a major part of restraint training is de-escalation. We need to have trained people in every building, so you have people that are, you know, we call it refresher, but they're getting retrained, they have to do that yearly. The 13-hour course is a two-day course where they learn everything from soup to nuts in CPI, which is, I can't remember what the acronym stands for, but it is the organization that we work through for that certification. Those two days will be the October 7th, tomorrow, and Tuesday, November 8th, so those are the two days, those 13 hours. And those people are volunteer and are put into that.
But the goal is to have at least a couple people at each building?
Yes, and we do, and we're very lucky, you know, again, foresight, we, the people running that course are our own people in district. Don Techeco and Gillian Anderson, and we thank them for taking on that role, but, you know, having those people trained to train our people saves the district a lot of money and also gives us a lot of flexibility with how and when we operate.
It's a great menu you put together, it looked good.
Yeah, well, it's not just, yeah, I mean, it's not just me, I mean, the teachers are making their own suggestions.
Yeah, I can see the different names on here.
Yeah.
Do you know how many people are attending each right now? Like, do people sign up for it?
I do, unfortunately, that did not print out.
I'm just curious.
You can get, you can get kind of a general idea. You can get kind of a general idea if you look where it says needs approval, those are kind of the rough numbers. For instance, curriculum mapping secondary, there's 45 people in that, that's on the second page. And then, in the elementary version, it's more of a time, it's basically the same thing, there's 51 in that, so you can see a good 50/50.
And the authors are running, you're going to be in a lot of places, too.
Well, yes, well, I mean, that's the person that originated, so those are the ones that I created.
Okay.
Tina created some, right, I'm not, I'm not running all of those...
He's not leading all those activities.
Right, I'd like to, I'd like to say just how talented I am, I can multiply myself over, that's just, that's just who created the event.
Different buildings, even.
Yes, yes, very talented, very talented.
All right, any other questions for Dr. Thompson? Thank you very much. Moving on to, well, public forum, there's nobody here for, school committee forum? Joanne?
I'm good. Except I want to say happy birthday to my daughter. She's 19 today.
A broadcast shout-out. Joanne?
I was watching the Millville-Sleckman's meeting the other day, and there's something about a playground at Millville Elementary. Has that been sort of rolled out, or is that still in the planning stages?
I'm waiting to hear.
Okay. What I heard so far, sounds like a...
Yeah, yep.
Sounds like it's going to be good news.
Waiting to hear the good news.
I was actually going to ask status of, if we've heard anything on that, so that's perfect timing. Guess I should have watched it. That was, that was my share. Don't worry about it.
Right, let's talk first.
And I also, so moving on, we have upcoming meeting October 20th. We've put a few items aside for that agenda, if you have any others, certainly forward them to Wendy or I.
Madam Chair, the elementary report card committee has finished their work, and we are expecting them to come forth with the report cards on the 20th, just so...
Oh, great.
All right, and I hope to have a draft out to you in our next packet as well.
So far, on October 20th, we have the specialized director coming in to talk about IST, the IST process, wants to give us an update on that social motion, and we have a report card committee. We have transportation, I believe it's going to be Wen who's going to be coming in, and that was based on the recommendation from, who, who's the person that was here?
Rich Labrie.
Rich Labrie, who came in and said we should be putting our bid out in early...
We have one more to add.
That's what we have on the agenda thus far.
And I will be able to present the superintendent's award for excellence, which is one of my favorite times of the year at that meeting as well, to a very deserving recipient.
And we'll be moving into executive session for a review of Unit B and Unit C negotiations, and to complete the superintendent evaluation, which will be public at our next meeting. And we will not be returning to public session, we will adjourn from executive session, so I need a roll call vote to enter into executive session. Joanne? Steve?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Erin, yes?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.